We do not use the institution of town meeting to address matters of social or public interest, other than, of course, the business directly before the meeting. However, the events that have engulfed our nation and much of the world since the death of George Floyd three weeks ago yesterday have served as a powerful and at times raw reminder for many of us that we still have not achieved racial equality and that this inequity is felt often and painfully by many, many people. So at this time, on this night, in this largely white and largely affluent town, we have to acknowledge that. Please join me in another moment of silence, this time to show our support for our sisters and brothers of all colors in the fight for true racial equality. Thank you. Our guest policy, we're not voting by voice this evening, so we're somewhat less concerned, but the guests are sitting up here in the front on this section right here. The rest of this section over here is voters. As we always do, I want to draw a distinction between the articles in the warrant and the motions that will be acted on this evening. So ideally, each one of you has two different chiefs of paper. One is the town warrant, which is bound, which was mailed to you at your house, and you may have gotten another one when you came in. And the other is the stapled pieces of paper labeled Town Manager's Proposed Motions. The warrant provides notice of what we're going to be acting on this evening. The motions are the actual text of what we will be debating this evening. So we will begin action on each item by me saying, "May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting?" And then ideally, somebody will say, "So moved." When they do that, what we are moving, what they're moving, is the text that's in the Town Manager's Proposed Motions. So if you'd like to, at any point, check the exact language of what we're debating, that would be in the Town Manager's Proposed Motions. Different voting procedure this evening. Voting by voice isn't going to work from your cars, so we're going to do all votes by holding up the yellow card that you were given coming in. Here's mine. So when I call for a vote, I'm going to ask everybody to hold your card out the window of your car. Ideally, I will be able to make a call on the vote just visually by ideally a sea of yellow on one vote, and then on the opposite vote, little or no yellow. So when it's that clear, I'll be able to make a call just visually without an actual count. If it's not clear, then we have tellers to do the physical counting as we typically do when I can't make a call on a voice vote. If you would like to speak on a motion, please get out of your car and move to one of the tents which have microphones in them. There are five tents there numbered. Each of them has a microphone. So if you'd like to speak on a motion, please get out of your car, move to a microphone, and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please begin by giving your name and street address. As always, we'd like to keep the debates concise and to the point. All the debate must be courteous and respectful. A reminder, brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. It generally should not be necessary to refer to individuals by name in the debate. If you must refer to another speaker's remarks for clarity, please do so with the utmost respect. If you believe it will be necessary to speak for more than five minutes, then you should have let me know in advance. If you have at any point you have a question about the procedure or the conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized. Let me know that you have a point of order, and then state your question or concern. One of our procedural motions is a motion for the previous question or moving the question. It brings an immediate vote on the pending motion, ends the debate, requires a two-thirds vote. I will only entertain a motion to move the question after both sides have had a fair opportunity to be heard, and I may allow voters who have been recognized to speak first before entertaining the motion. If you make a motion to move the question, you cannot also accompany that with remarks on the question. So if you'd like to make a motion to move the question, step to the mic and start with moving the question. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get through the business tonight without pausing for an adjournment. If it ends up that it's taking too long, we may need to take a short break partway through the meeting. We'll keep an eye on that as the time goes. Any questions or concerns about procedure? Very well. We'll get going. Article 1, Annual Town Warrant. Town report, excuse me. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, there has been a motion made. Is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. Is there any discussion? Very well. All those in favor, please signify by holding your yellow cards visibly outside the car. Good, thank you. Can you take them down? All those opposed, please signify by holding your yellow cards outside the car or up in the air. The motion passes unanimously. I will make a unanimous call if I don't see any yellow cards. That's a little bit harder to be sure on that than a voice vote. So if I make a call on unanimity and you in fact voted against, please let me know. We don't need to have the minutes record unanimous if in fact it's not. But I will be making it based on what I can see, but it's easier, a lot easier to miss a card than it is to miss a voice. Article 2, Reports of Committees. There are no reports scheduled, so we can dispense with this. Article 3, PEG Access and Cable-Related Fund Acceptance. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, motion has been made. Is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It requires majority vote for adoption. I recognize our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. This is somewhat of a housekeeping manner. This article has the town adopt a section of state law, which is a new process by which we pass through the funds that come in for cable TV from Comcast and from Verizon. It's literally just a new process the state put into place, and this will officially bring us into compliance. And a little bit later in the warrant, you'll see there'll be a transfer of the funds from this year to go to 143 TV.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted to approve this motion by a vote of 5 to 0. The Advisory Committee has likewise voted to recommend approval by a vote of 7 to 0. Is there any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor, please hold your yellow cards in the air. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold your yellow cards in the air. The motion does pass unanimously. Article 4, The Operating Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Again, I'll recognize our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
Thank you. There's a short PowerPoint, if we can flip over to that. We started this year with, we started in January with the formal announcement of the budget, and two months later, we ended up in a very different place. So I do want to talk a little bit about how we got where we are. One of the, among the foundations that we began with as we prepared this spending plan is our AAA credit rating, and that becomes an extremely strong foundation, which is allowing us to do the things we're going to be proposing to do. The town has some very strong financial policies and has continued to update them for the last 10 years. There are solid fund balances. The general stabilization, for example, has over $4.4 million in it, and where there is no plan to touch any of that at this point. Local tax collections have been stable. In fact, we're at 98.3% of property tax collections as of today, which is a very good number. And conservative budgeting, something the town's been doing for a number of years and that we've continued to do in the spending plan. Among the other foundational principles, we have adopted very comprehensive financial reports and received awards for the last seven years and expecting our eighth any day. And also the new budget document, we're in the fourth year of that, which has many more details than the old spreadsheets. There's departmental details, there's narratives, charts and graphs, policies, glossaries, 190 pages of everything you wanted to know about the Cohasset spending plans, including the capital plan and debt sections. And that won a GFOA award for presentation for FY '21. Now, as we started the budget, the Selectmen's goals were stay within the allowable tax levy, plan for and fund capital priorities, and of course, we had to estimate revenue and expense impacts from COVID-19 and the developing recession. The priorities that have come together through the executive leadership of the town from the Advisory Committee and the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen, maintain stability has been a critical one, which means prioritizing school and town services, keeping them stable and allowing us to have a strong foundation as we go into the new fiscal year. To utilize all available federal and state support to reduce the operating impact on the budget, and we thank Congressman Lynch and all the work's being done in the federal level for that. And to maintain our investments in facilities, equipment, and infrastructure. The last thing we need to do is slip on those. We have gotten more conservative and held back projects that are not time-sensitive and have the ability to be delayed, and it's still critical that we invest in ambulances and the roads and the schools and a lot of other pieces of the capital plan. Another major priority for this coming year is closely monitoring town finances. The finance team, the treasurer collector, the finance director, myself, meet three times a week. We go over our cash flow, we understand where we are. We've been closely collaborated with the Advisory Committee and the Selectmen and the School Committee and others on where our budget status is, and we'll be doing that all summer. Normally, we take a little bit of a break in the summer, and that's not going to be the case this year. We're closely monitoring the state budget for impacts on educational aid and general assistance and all the rest, because it's critical to know what's going to happen. At this point, the state has no budget for FY '21. They've made a commitment to pay all of, all of the money for aid that they've committed for FY '20, but at this point, FY '21 is an uncertain point. And we have to plan for budget updates at the special town meeting as required, more than usual. And also planning for the future. One of the most important things to recognize as we enter this area of uncertainty is that local governments are often, have delayed impacts and delayed recoveries. Our tax plan has already said, people pay their taxes, as you heard, we're at over 98% collection. The impacts tended to lag, and then we recover on a lag basis as well. We've explored alternative ways to deliver services. In fact, we've, we've had to go from analog to digital, from Zoom meetings to the way we do facilities passes to what the schools did this past three, four months. We need to continue to do more of that. And in fact, tonight's meeting is on Facebook Live. We had never done that before, and for the last three months, we've been pushing meetings out that way, and they've been reaching far more people than ever before, and we'd like to continue to do that. We've also need to maintain investments in the town's capital assets, the schools, the roads, equipment, things that make the town go and provide the services that everyone considers important. The budget is basically, again, I won't go into great detail, it's carved up, and I guess we could court the four big slices of pie. The largest one, clearly 42%, goes to schools directly, 27% to town expenses, which is police and fire and public works and library and a host of things. Shared, which is expenses that are shared between the two budgets, that's healthcare, insurance, a number of other items is about 25% of the budget, and 6% is other, and that's money that goes to the, to various state expenses and all. And I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to revenue. So as everyone realizes, the vast majority of our revenue comes from local property taxes, that's 84%. State aid's about seven, local receipts, that's building permits and all of that, and even the biggest chunk of that is excise tax, that's about 7%. And there's another 2% and various other things that come in. And this year, we're tapping a small, old reserve fund. For FY '21, we had to make almost $600,000 in reductions to get to tonight by taking these $600,000 out of the revenue side and finding offsets and expense cuts, which have been discussed at length with the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. We're maximizing the use of the federal COVID grants for our safety equipment, building upgrades for schools and first responders and public buildings. We are not recommending any general stabilization money be used at this point. It's most certainly, from a fiscal sense, raining, but we believe that we can get through this right now without having to touch any of that money. And we need to prepare for an uncertain future, but this presents a secure budget with stable services. Picture from the spring, a little cool today for the big ice sculpture, but our focus is on the future, not just the past 250 years, but the next 250 days and months. And the spending plan, most certainly, we believe, provides that stability and that structure and flexibility to meet the challenges ahead.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee, I'll recognize Ms. Eileen Leblappen.
Good evening, everybody. The Advisory Committee looked at the budget very carefully, all the different departments, where the money was going, where the money was coming from. And in 8-1 decision, we supported the budget. The one person was concerned about COVID and being prepared for it now and in the future, but after reviewing the grants and the way that our town administrators have been preparing us for the present and the future, the majority of us, 8 to 1, felt that we were in good shape. So for that reason, we are in support of the budget. And thank you all for coming here. This is an amazing town, and we are working really hard to make all this happen and to be in a stable situation. And we really do feel that the budget there, it is in a very good shape situation, and we made sure that when money was spent, it was high priority, and it was the best for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen, by a vote of 5 to 0, have recommended in favor of adoption of the motion. And the School Committee, by a vote of 4 in favor and 1 abstention, has also recommended adoption. Again, it does require two-thirds vote for approval. Is there discussion? Very well, we'll proceed to a vote. Mr. Wakeman. In most cases, I'm not going to be able to recognize you with your mask, but I actually saw his car, so I'll recognize Mr. Wakeman.
I'm speaking as a citizen, not on behalf of the Capital Budget Committee. Sam Wakeman, 255 Atlantic Avenue. I have two, a question on two revenue sources that don't seem to me appropriate. The first one is $165,000 of free cash. I don't know if that's free cash from the fiscal '20 budget or expected free cash from the fiscal '20-'21 budget. If it's from the fiscal, from either one of those, at this point, we have no free cash, so I'm not sure how we can count on having that revenue. The second question is $200,000 from the Pension Reserve Fund, and I'm not sure why we need to take money out of the Pension Reserve Fund. So those are my two questions and concerns. I would rather not see us go back into the situation where we stripped out various funds like the General Stabilization Fund to balance the budget 10-plus years ago. Thank you.
So if I get, if I can answer the first question first. The free cash is available in this year's budget. We can't spend money that hasn't created, been created yet, so the town actually has more than half a million dollars in available free cash today. So this decision was made in collaboration, obviously, with the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee to ensure that the town continues to pay its obligations to the OPEB trust fund. So rather than have that come out of the operating fund and have put impacts on programs and staff, the decision was made to maintain that contribution, but to use the available free cash that exists today, which was going to no other particular purpose. So that is money that's available today and is available to put into that OPEB trust fund. So that's, that's the answer to the first one. And the second, the Pension Reserve Fund has been on the books of the town for many years, as I, as you know more than I, and it had not been touched in many, many years. In fact, the, the town used to use it to balance its budget many years ago. There was, there's more than, I think it's $370,000, and it's been accumulating for some time. And again, a decision was made, rather than touch the General Stabilization Fund, which has $4.4 million in it, this is, this is a little bit more than three. The decision was made that if we take a piece of that, again, we can, we don't have to make any programmatic cuts today. There's such uncertainty, it was felt and discussed at length, that it was more important to keep teachers in place and staff in place and services in place and see how things shake out, rather than have to make major cuts. And this was money that, again, had been sitting there for many years, and it's not needed for the pensions per se at this point. So again, it was available, and it was, it was a decision made to use this now to buy, to grant us some flexibility as we go into this next budget year.
Thank you. Question, microphone one.
Timothy Davis, 257 Atlantic Avenue. Let me first start by thanking the town manager, Board of Selectmen, and all the town employees and volunteers that have worked together so hard to bring this together, in addition to working so hard to keep us safe in Cohasset. Kevin McCarthy said not a long while ago that it would not be a Cohasset town meeting if Tim Davis didn't talk about OPEB. This may be my seventh or eighth appearance to do that. OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, is essentially the medical insurance in retirement that we, the town, promise to our employees when we hire them. It's similar to the pension we also promised them. Eight years ago, the town of Cohasset faced a pending and potentially disastrous financial crisis. The unfunded OPEB liability was $25 million and growing every year. It had been an easy can to kick down the road because not many people even knew what it was, let alone how to fix it. The OPEB committee was formed and progress was made with the support of the taxpayers and the employees themselves. However, at the end of fiscal 2020, that liability has grown to $45 million. That's the bad news. The good news, though, through the work of the Town Treasurer, Finance Director, and the Post-Employment Committee, Advisory, and Board of Selectmen, we now have a solution. I may not look like Elizabeth Warren, but we have a plan for that. If we stick to the plan approved by the Board of Selectmen by the year 2043, the OPEB trust fund will be fully funded. It is highly likely I will not be here to celebrate with you, but celebrate you should along with all the taxpayers and town employees who will have made that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We'll proceed to a initial vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 4, please hold your yellow cards visible. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold your yellow cards up and visible. The motion under Article 4 passes unanimously. Move to Article 5, Unpaid Bills From Previous Years. I'm pleased to tell you that we don't have any, so may I have a motion that this article be indefinitely postponed? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, is there any discussion? Requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please hold up your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. Motion for indefinite postponement passes unanimously. Article 6, Supplemental Appropriations For Fiscal 2020. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager.
Thank you. As I mentioned in Article 3, the funding for the PEG access here is now flowing from this year as a result of the actions on Article 3 to 143 TV, and that's a little more than $203,000. And what will happen going forward is that at the special meeting and at the annual meeting, we'll make regular contributions from the money that's come in. All the money that comes in will go on. The other fund allocation is for the sewer plant. I think, as everyone knows, back in the special in the fall, replacement membranes were approved, and unfortunately, one set of them began to fail only days after the approval. So during the fall and spring, there was a need to do some diversion of flow to Hull that cost more, that was not budgeted, and this $170,000, which is available in the sewer fund, will pay for that diversion, those extra costs that were incurred while the repairs were pending, and now they're completed, by the way. The good news is both sides are done, and the plant is fully functional.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted 5 to 0 to recommend adoption, and the Advisory Committee likewise, by a vote of 8 to 0, has voted to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 7, Stabilization And Other Special Funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager.
These contributions to stabilization funds are part of the annual contributions that are part of our fiscal policies. The contribution to capital stabilization is part of the debt roll-off as debt is paid for prior projects. The money's rolled back into the stabilization fund to pay for future projects. The OPEB trust fund, again, that was discussed in the budget, this is a continuing, and this is an increase of $15,000 from last year, which represents a 3% increase of the total amount that's planned to be budgeted of about $500,000. The remainder of that money will hopefully be allocated at special in the fall, and the remaining amount is going from sewer revenue into the sewer capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen, by a vote of 5 to 0, has recommended adoption, and the Advisory Committee likewise, by a vote of 8 to 0, has voted to recommend adoption. Is there discussion of the motion under Article 7? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow card. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 8, Capital Improvements Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Is there a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a two-thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize the Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, Mr. Sam Wakeman. Hold on one, Sam. Let's get the mic, microphone three, if you would, please.
Is it all set?
Yes, thank you.
Who knows? To give you a little bit of background, going into this year, we had $3,642,000 worth of capital requests. Our capital stabilization fund availability was $2,978,000. So again, we were going to be faced with making decisions on what items were more important than others and what we would fund. Thanks to the hard work of the town manager and the various departments, the original requests were revised, and we ended up having only $1,476,000 worth of requests to be funded, which we funded with $816,000 of cash and bonding $659,000. This will leave the capital stabilization fund in a very nice position with $2 million going into the special town meeting in the fall for a large number of items that we had to defer. But I'd very much like to thank the departments for realizing the uncertainty we have going forward in terms of reserving our ammunition, so to speak, for things that may be coming down the pike. We're now starting to see a better feel for the revenue coming in, so hopefully, we won't have any shortfalls. One other item is that we recovered about $58,000 from prior requests, which funds were not used. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen, by a vote of 5 to 0, has voted to recommend adoption. And the Advisory Committee, by a vote of 9 to 0, on all the projects except the facilities generator, on which- generator, on which the vote was seven to two, has voted to recommend adoption. The water commission voted on the water items three to zero to recommend adoption, and the sewer commission voted on the sewer items by a vote of three to zero to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion has passed unanimously. Article IX, Departmental Revolving Funds Amendment. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
These are three new small revolving funds that are being created, one for the library, for the patron printer. It's a new system, and the money will just go back into maintaining the printer and paper. The road moratorium fee is to capture the money that people pay as penalties if they need to get into a road for emergency purposes before the moratorium period is up, and that will put that money back into the roads. And then the last one is a classic tree bank fund, and again, if people have to pay penalties because they have improperly removed a tree on a scenic way or in violation of other code, that money would end up going back into this fund as well.
Thank you. The board of selectmen has recommended by a vote of five to zero approval of the motion, and the advisory committee has recommended by a vote of seven to zero approval of the motion. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion has been adopted unanimously. Article X, Departmental Revolving Fund Spending Limits. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It requires a majority vote for adoption. Again, our town manager.
This is now an annual article that just sets the upper bound spending limits on the various revolving funds the town has.
Thank you. The board of selectmen, five to zero, advisory committee, seven to zero, have both recommended adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, it does require a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Motion has been adopted unanimously. Article XI, Allocation of Funds for One-Time Cost. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. Our town manager.
There are five items. One is something we're now doing annually. It allocates a piece of the waterways fund and makes it available for repairs and work on docks and the seawalls and other items at the harbor on an annual basis, and that money comes from part of the excise tax and penalties that are paid for violations of various codes. The other four are projects, or the school, fund funding for the math curriculum. It's important that we distribute the free cash that's available equitably, and this helps pay for a curriculum the schools have selected for the elementary schools. It's a one-time expense. Once it's purchased, they can use it for a number of years. The other three involve kind of a consolidated approach to be flexible for the coming year as part of the budget reductions consulting, and there's usually some small numbers for fiscal consulting or engineering consulting for various projects and projects and programs. Those are all kind of stripped out of the budget, so this puts an amount of 50 that's available, which will be consulted with the selectmen before we do, so that money will be available to tap as needed, and if it's not used, it'll be returned as unused at the end of the year to free cash. The supplies and equipment and the maintenance upgrades are there to, again, add flexibility. With the COVID money, hopefully, we won't have to tap any of that for that. That said, there are unanticipated, we've now experienced unanticipated expenses, and we simply don't know what the fall will hold or the year ahead, and having resources, facilities to jump into projects, they need to put up a Plexiglas screen, or if the hurricane season turns out to be worse, or even as expected and affects us, it gives us, again, flexibility, and if the money's not spent at the end of the year, it'll just be returned.
Thank you. The board of selectmen by a vote of five to zero has recommended approval, and the advisory committee by a vote of eight to one has recommended approval. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion has been adopted unanimously. Article XII, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 91 Liability. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager.
Again, this is an annual article that allows us to partner with the state if we end up doing any work in and around the harbor.
Thank you. The board of selectmen by a vote of five to zero, advisory committee by a vote of seven to zero have both recommended adoption. Is there discussion? Requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion has been adopted unanimously. I appreciate you holding up those cards high. I know it's hard to keep doing that over and over again, but it does make it easier for me, so thank you. Article XIII, Additional Real Estate Exemptions, Annual Renewal. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? For a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. Mr. Chris Senior.
This is, again, an annual renewal of various veterans and senior exemptions that have been on the books but need an annual renewal by town meeting.
Thank you. The board of selectmen by a vote of five to zero and the advisory committee by a vote of six to zero with one abstention have both recommended adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion has been adopted unanimously. Article XIV, Veterans Tax Benefits and Exemptions. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager.
These additional exemptions for veterans and spouses are recommended by the board of assessors, and they're part of the Brave Act. There's a synopsis in the warrant. They basically, again, extend eligibility to a variety of veterans and their spouses for service and changes some of the eligibility requirements to allow veterans to get them sooner.
Thank you. Our board of assessors has recommended adoption by a vote of two to zero. Board of selectmen recommended adoption by a vote of five to zero. Advisory committee recommended adoption by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion was adopted unanimously. Article XV, Former Prisoners of War or Spouses Tax Exemption. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager.
Again, this is a new exemption, recommended, approved by the state and recommended by the board of assessors, and this one actually affects motor vehicle excise tax and allows exemptions for former prisoners of war and their surviving spouses.
Thank you. Board of assessors by a vote of two to zero, board of selectmen by a vote of five to zero, and advisory by a vote of nine to zero have all recommended adoption. Is there discussion? Is there someone in mic one? Did you have a question or discussion, sir?
No, Article 16 is what I'm presenting.
Oh, Russ, thank you. Okay, nothing yet. Okay. Is there any further discussion on 15? Very well, does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion on Article 15, please signify by holding up your yellow Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion on Article 15 has been adopted unanimously. Article 16, Community Preservation Committee. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize from the community preservation committee, Mr. Russ Bonetti.
Good evening. This has a lot of little pieces to it, but if you'll indulge me, I'll read each individual one. If any of you want to discuss any part of it, we can do that, and we can do it all in one vote, get out of here a lot quicker, and it's moving quick as it is. Article 16, on the first part of it, we are statutorily required to put aside 10% of our income every year into the different sub-accounts, which are open space, historical, affordable housing, and administrative. In the first three, it's $58,400. The administrative account of $29,200, last year was $29,000. We spent $1,700. The rest of that goes back into the fund. For historical preservation, we have to the library, a $3,000 grant to restore a map and digitize some of their documents. Open space, there's improvements to the Aaron River area, removing graffiti and some undergrowth. Under the Affordable Housing Trust, we're very glad to give another $200,000 to that. We also, for historical preservation, on the upcoming town hall project, we have recommended $200,000 for that. That'd be for drawings and various things. Open space, schools. It's Osgood School. There was a shortfall in the funds needed to fence in the third and fifth grade area, $13,000 for that. There was a bond payment for land that we bought about 18 years ago now for the water department. This $21,884 will be, there'll be two more payments, that's paid off. The bottom parts, work on the Maritime Museum. These are grants that expired. We put a three-year date on them, and these were extending. The Historic Society for Work on the Maritime Museum of $8,400. The Tretis House, and it shows up there twice, $200,000 and $100,000. These funds probably won't be needed, but in the event they run into a shortfall, building the Tretis House, which is next to the fire station, if you're not aware, that'll be available for them to use. The youth baseball for work on their dugouts and bleachers and doing some ADA stuff, $6,137.15 left over. Milliken Field for the bathrooms and the storage, we extended $136,786. And Sandy Beach Association still had $3,479 and some change, and we extended that just in the event that there's still things that they'd like to do. And that is it for us. We always appreciate the support we get from town meeting and look forward to that tonight, too.
Thank you. The board of selectmen voted by a vote of five to zero to recommend adoption of this motion, and the advisory committee by a vote of eight to one voted to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please signify by holding up your yellow Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up a yellow card. There is one? Okay. All right. Well, the motion has passed, but it was not unanimous. The motion has passed. Article 17, Implementation of the Cohasset Choice Electricity Aggregation Plan. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Requires a majority vote for adoption. I understand we have a video to introduce us to this motion.
Hi, I'm Steve Wenner, 195 Hol Street, Chair of the Aggregation Subcommittee of the Cohasset Alternative Energy Committee. Thanks for coming to our annual town meeting today. I'm sorry I can't attend in person, but I want to explain Article 17, Implementation of the Cohasset Community Choice Electricity Aggregation Plan. Last year at annual town meeting, Cohasset voters unanimously authorized the board of selectmen to develop a plan for community choice aggregation. CCA is a state program to help towns get cheaper electricity for residents and businesses through the power of bulk purchasing and to offer affordable renewable energy options to lower greenhouse gas emissions. Our CCA plan is now in hand, and you are being asked today to decide whether the town should proceed toward implementation. If we vote yes on Article 17, then Cohasset will join with Situate and Marshfield to solicit bids from electricity suppliers. The board of selectmen will evaluate the bids. If the best bid is good for Cohasset, then the town will initiate the enrollment process. If a satisfactory contract cannot be secured, there's no obligation to proceed. Before presenting the plan details, I'll say a few words to explain the concept. In Massachusetts, the generation of electricity is separate from the delivery of that power. National Grid maintains the power lines and sends us our bills. Most people let National Grid choose the power generator, but we can also choose our own supplier. I'm sure you have all seen many solicitations from power companies asking for your business. In Massachusetts, towns are also allowed to solicit bulk contracts from energy suppliers on behalf of residents and businesses. That is called community choice aggregation. Across the state, 163 towns have CCA plans approved by the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. Locally, Cohasset has joined forces with Situate and Marshfield to work with the energy broker, Good Energy, to negotiate contracts that will get us the best possible deal. The plan is to offer residents and businesses three options, which vary in price and the proportion of green energy. Note that the contract portion of green energy will be guaranteed through Class I Massachusetts Renewable Energy Certificates, which consist mostly of wind and solar-generated electricity. So what is the plan? Customers will have three options or can opt out altogether. The three options are: one, a least-cost base plan with the minimum amount of renewable energy allowed by state law, which is currently 16%; two, the standard plan, which is expected to include as much green energy as possible while still keeping the cost at or below the current National Grid base price. This might be 26% green energy, but the exact percentage is subject to market conditions at the time of the bid; and three, a premium plan with 100% green energy. Prices will remain fixed for the duration of the contract period, which will be two to four years, as decided by the board of selectmen based on bids received from energy suppliers. Currently, Cohasset's plan is before the Department of Public Utilities for approval. That agency's review has been slowed because of the COVID-19 pandemic, but we still hope to gain approval and go out for bids this summer. The whole process of receiving and evaluating bids, notifying Cohasset residents and businesses, and enrolling customers in the plan of their choice will take several months. The town hopes to turn on the power switch late this year, or possibly in early 2021 if the pandemic slows the process significantly. After the winning bid is selected, every Cohasset resident will be notified by mail and given 30 days to make a decision. If a customer wishes to enroll in the standard plan, they do not need to do anything and will be automatically enrolled. and will be automatically enrolled. If they decide not to participate, they will return an opt-out card. If a resident wishes to enroll in the base plan, the cheapest one, or the premium plan, 100% green, the resident will need to call the supplier. The automatic enrollment feature is required by state law, but there is absolutely no risk to the customer. If a customer is automatically enrolled and decides later that they do not wish to participate, they can opt out at any time with no penalty. Note that automatic enrollment only applies to National Grid's basic service customers. If a customer with a third-party contract for electricity wishes to participate, they would first need to terminate their current contract. Why is this a great opportunity for Cohasset? Green, community-choice electricity aggregation is a great way for Cohasset residents and businesses to get bargain rates on their electricity service through the power of bulk purchasing and to help address climate change by reducing their carbon footprint. Please vote yes on Article 17. This article is unanimously endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Alternative Energy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The vote of the Alternative Energy Committee was a vote of six to zero, Board of Selectmen five to zero, Advisory Committee five to zero. Is there further discussion? It does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 17, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion has been adopted unanimously. Article 18, To Change the Name of the Cohasset Board of Health to the Cohasset Board of Public Health. I understand that we would like to indefinitely postpone this. This is inconsistent with what's in your warrant, but the plan is to indefinitely postpone this tonight and to deal with it in the fall. There's some technical issues in making sure that all of the different references are caught. Before we have a discussion, let me at least ask for the motion. They have a motion to indefinitely postpone. Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Does require a majority vote for adoption. Is there discussion there? Nope, I guess that has gone away. Is there any other discussion for the motion for indefinite postponement? Very well, we'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of indefinite postponement under Article 18, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Thank you. All those opposed to indefinite postponement for Article 18, please signify by holding up your yellow card. There is one there. That's all I see, motion has been adopted. Thank you. Article 19, Home Rule Petition to Change the Name of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen to the Cohasset Select Board. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I recognize Mr. Chris Senior.
The Board of Selectmen discussed this extensively over the past several months, and this effectively brings the board into the modern times, not just with a name change, but effectively recognizing that the board is an executive board, like a board of directors, that oversees policy and the general direction of the town. Many communities across the state, something close to 100, have now done this. The Massachusetts Selectments Association changed its name in January. So this is something that has been well-accepted across the rest of the Commonwealth.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and the Advisory Committee by a vote of seven to one with one abstention have voted to recommend adoption. It does require a majority. Is there discussion? Very well, we'll proceed to a vote. Again, it requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 19, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you, the motion has been adopted unanimously. Apparently, there was a negative vote, so it was not unanimous, but the motion has been adopted. Thank you for pointing that out. Article 20, Recision of Unused Borrowing Authority. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. Our town manager.
This is a periodic housekeeping article. These are three projects that were authorized for borrowing. The projects came in under budget, so the amount in these articles was never borrowed. So we're just going to clean the borrowing authorization off the books.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and the Advisory Committee by a vote of eight to zero have both voted to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 20, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. The motion was adopted unanimously. Article 21, Acquisition of Easement at Two Smith Place for Culvert to Transmit Waters of James Brook. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a two-thirds vote for adoption. I'll recognize the town manager.
This article will clarify, will clean up a problem where the town's easement, which applies to James Brook and the Brook itself, do not line up. Rather than impact the town's rights, this will actually clarify them. Unfortunately, again, for whatever reason, the recorded easement and the Brook itself, which the town has jurisdiction over, are not in the same location. So if the town needed to get in there to do work or for whatever other reason, there's a potential issue. This will clarify that. This particular article was drafted by council and requires both a new, clean easement to be adopted before the current one is released. The Public Works Department has reviewed it, they're comfortable with it, and they have it mapped. So this is at this point ready to go.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted five-zero to recommend adoption, and the Advisory Committee has voted eight-zero to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? Is there a question or comment from the tent number two? Nope, okay. Any other discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed to the motion under Article 21, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Handful of negatives. The motion is adopted by the requisite two-thirds vote. Article 22, Zoning Bylaw Amendment for Floodplain and Watershed Protection District. It's proposed that this be indefinitely postponed. Apparently FEMA changed the process, and so this will be reworked and likely re-proposed to deal with this subject in the fall. May I have a motion for indefinite postponement? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion for indefinite postponement, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow card. The motion has been adopted. Thank you, there are a couple negatives. The motion has been adopted by the requisite majority vote. Article 23, Transfer of 808 Jerusalem Road to the Affordable Housing Trust. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. Our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
This transfer is a piece of land the town acquired through tax title, which is in West Corner. Had been the home of an antique store before that, I believe, a library branch many years ago. The land would be transferred pursuant to this article to the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust for the purposes of affordable housing. I believe the trust has plans upon this transfer to do an RFP, to see what's out there, and partner with a potential housing, affordable housing provider to put something in there. It could be a Habitat Humanity Project or something else. But the plan would be to transfer it to the Cohasset Affordable Housing Trust to create affordable housing.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen has voted to recommend adoption by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has voted to recommend adoption by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you, the motion was adopted unanimously. Article 24, Reciprocal Easements for 124 Elm Street. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. Our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
This article empowers the Board of Selectmen upon an approval by the Planning Board of a project at 124 Elm Street, which is the site of the current Cohasset opera in, to negotiate and accept easements, accept them and grant them, depending on how the project ends up being developed as approved by the Planning Board. The motion would also require that the current 17 parking spaces that are on-site be preserved, if not in their identical location, at least in number. And it also requires a very detailed formal plan to be presented before any easement would be approved.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero has recommended adoption. The Advisory Committee by a vote of six to zero with two abstentions has voted to recommend adoption. And the Planning Board by a vote of five to zero has voted to recommend adoption. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 24, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. There's a couple, thank you. The motion does pass by the requisite two-thirds vote. Article 25, Lease of Town Property for Siting of Solar Power Electric Generation Facility. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Requires a majority vote for adoption. We are going to have a video introducing us to this article and to the next one, and then a video specifically as to this article.
Hi, I'm Tanya Bodell, 88 South Main Street. I'm the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee, and I'm here to explain to you what Article 25 and 26 are about. I'm standing in front of Cohasset's solar energy array on the old landfill, which provides more than 150,000 reasons why the Alternative Energy Committee would like you to vote yes on these two articles. Since August 2017, the old landfill's solar energy array has saved the town $150,000. But that's not all. We can do more. There are federal incentives and state incentives that would allow us to get a great price for solar. All we have to do is have permission from you to be able to authorize leaders in our town to look at options for leasing town sites for solar. This doesn't mean that we will. It means that we can put out to bid and find out what the potential prices, and if it makes sense, move forward with saving the town more money. Hi, Article 25 would allow the Board of Selectmen to lease the potential town sites that are identified. Number one, the DPW Station, where we are right now. There are potential rooftops, potential expansion of the existing solar energy array site that could save us money. Number two, Wilcox Commons. This is a brand-new roof that potentially could allow us to use solar energy to be able to save our bills for our seniors and for that function. And number three, the police and fire station. Chief Sylvia is very supportive of this, as is Chief Wiggly, and it is an option to be able to use the roofs and the potential land on the police station and fire station to be able to provide reliability and resiliency when the lights go out. By having our own solar energy array on the roofs with battery backup, we would be able to fire up our emergency resources even when the rest of the grid is down. So these are the sites in Article 25 that we would like your approval to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease, if it makes sense, if it makes sense. And if it doesn't make sense, then we won't do it. But this is an opportunity to save the town money, to increase our reliability and resiliency, and to provide power to some of our most important emergency response resources.
Thank you. The Alternative Energy Committee, of course, recommended adoption by a vote of five to zero. The Board of Selectmen recommends adoption by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee recommends adoption by a vote of six to zero with two abstentions. Is there discussion? Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 25, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. The motion is adopted by the requisite majority vote. Article 26, we have another short video to introduce us to Article 26.
Hi, this is Tanya Bodell, again, Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. And I'm standing in front of the Cohasset High School/Middle School. In 2011, the town gave the school committee authorization to be able to lease the school roofs of the high school/middle school for solar, if it made sense. We put that out to bid, and at that time, it didn't make sense. There were issues with the roof that needed to be addressed. The price that we received was not great, so we did not proceed. Article 26 asks for reauthorization of the ability to lease the high school/middle school school roofs, as well as associated land, for solar energy arrays. It also includes permission for the school committee to lease the school roofs and associated real estate of the Deer Hill School and the Osgood School. Why do we want to do this now? There are federal incentives that are going to ratchet down at the end of this year. There are state incentives that quickly get filled up, and we don't know if it's going to be renewed again. When we received permission in 2011 to be able to put solar energy arrays on the old landfill, it took us six years to be able to implement. By having the permission now, go out to bid, we can see if it makes sense, what the price is that we can get. And if it's lower than the price we're currently paying, and expected to stay lower, then it would make sense for the town to move forward with installing the solar array. The solar energy arrays also serve as a building block for reliability and resiliency. On the school roofs, they would fire up the schools directly and energize the schools when the lights are out. That allows for safety, and it means that we don't have to necessarily rely on diesel fuel or natural gas for our backup generation at the schools. We have the building blocks to be able to proceed, to be able to supply power to the schools, and especially to save money. So this is why we are putting forth Article 26. The school committee reviewed it, unanimously supported it in concept. There were some additional changes that were made to the identified lots, but it's very supported by the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Alternative Energy Committee and the Advisory Committee, and we hope you support it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. The vote of the Alternative Energy Committee was five to zero. The Board of Selectmen voted to recommend adoption by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee recommends adoption by a vote of six to zero with two abstentions. Planning Board recommends adoption by a vote of five to zero, and the school committee votes recommends adoption by a vote of five to zero. Is there discussion? Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. Does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article twenty-six, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Thank you very much. The motion does pass by the requisite majority vote. Article twenty-seven, the citizens petition release of easement. May I have a motion for indefinite postponement?
No.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Does require a majority vote for adoption, to discussion of the motion for indefinite postponement? Great. May I have the votes in favor? If you're voting in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow card. Thank you. Opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow card. The motion for indefinite postponement is adopted unanimously. Before we depart, give me about thirty seconds for some thank yous. First, obviously, thanks to all of you for coming out and handling the new procedures so well. Very much appreciated. Does really make me feel very warm and comfortable and happy with our town. The number of folks worked very hard to put this meeting on in this fashion and had it go off so smoothly. The music circus, of course, lent us the facility. The emergency management committee was hugely helpful in the organization. Chief Quigley in the police department, Chief Sylvia in the fire department, our AV contractors with the screens and the sound, the parking and other attendants, all very, very terrific job. Thank you very much. If those of you who are in your cars want to give a little lean on your horn as a thank you for everyone, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Thanks to all of you for such a great meeting. That concludes the business in the warrant. May I have a motion to dissolve?
No.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion to dissolve has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by again, and lastly, holding up your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by holding up your yellow cards. Congratulations. Great meeting. The motion to dissolve was passed. Thanks very much, and have a great evening.